I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission December 27, 2018, meeting at 6:00 PM or a little after. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from November 27, 2018, regular meeting.
Make motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting minutes pass. First item of business, site plan requested by Barge Cuthbert and Associates for Laverne Retail Center, property located on Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15M Group C Parcel 10, C2 Highway Zoning Service Zoning District, property owned by Young Seof Han, Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, unless you all want to do it at the end, the item one was to appoint a vice chair to finish the conversation.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry too. I should have announced that.
It was not on the agenda. My apologies. Let's go back and make our first item of business.
I don't see that actually on the agenda, Chairman. I'm sorry.
I don't either, sir.
That's why I missed it.
It was on the agenda that went out for the workshop.
Okay.
So, well, I mean, I don't... It's up to y'all, and we won't have one.
Mr. Chairman, with you here and it not being advertised correctly, let's just move on with our agenda and put it on for next month.
Very good. We'll continue on for...
Nothing wrong with that approach.
Thank you, sir. We will continue on with item number one, Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a request for a retail center at 5242 Murfreesboro Road, map 15M Group C Parcel 10. Actually, it's right beside 5242. Right now, it's a vacant lot, so it does not have an address, which is customary for vacant lots. It is zoned C2, and they're requesting to build a building of 4,950 square feet, and there are 24 parking spaces that are being provided, and the ordinance requires 19, so they are meeting and exceeding their parking requirements. You can see the property does back up to Glendale Drive, and actually, a lot of Glendale is C2 also, as you can see in the map. Some of the photographs here... So this is 5242, kind of stair-step building that was built as a medical office building originally, and now, it was vacant for some time. So beside it, over here to the southeast, is this open field where this new retail center would be built. And you can see in the back, there's several large mature trees, and there's another view. And this project came to us first in June of this year, so that's when these photographs were taken. And again, you can see some of the parking from 5242, and then the open field. And this is another shot of the trees in the back, the really large trees, and those will be staying with this site. And I think that covers all the questions. There's no technical items, so staff will be glad to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments in regard to this project?
Chairman, we discussed it at the workshop, and it's been going on for several months, and I think the applicant's done everything we've asked them to do, so without, make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Resubdivision plat interchange city industrial park lot 1 and 2 requested by Huddleston Steel, property located on Industrial Boulevard, tax map 15 parcel 26 and tax map 17 parcel 2.03. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by JKW LLC and Trinidad Benham. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is to replat two existing lots. The lots are side by side, and they're located off Waldron Road and International Boulevard. And currently, you can see the configuration of the lots now is the Trinidad Benham building, which is here. You can see the property line to the north, so this square area that's currently vacant will become part of their property. And the company here to the east is the Sash and Door Company, and they'll split the property that they have now, they'll split it off, and then combine it with Trinidad Benham. And it is zoned I-2, and this is the Nashville side, northeast side or northwest side of the Trinidad Benham building. It's a very large building. And then this is the rail line that goes between the two properties. So the property that is in question is this wooded area way back to the north. It's hard to get a good picture of it because it's landlocked, and this is a view from Waldron Road. Again, this heavily treed area back here. And again, this is the area that will become part of the Trinidad Benham property once the plat is complete. And I think that is all. There's no technical comments, so staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? With that, entertain a motion.
Make motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Item number three is deferred. Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir.
We will move on to item number four. Final plat Web Estates Phase 1 requested by Womble and Associates, property located on Morningside Drive and Hollendale Road, tax map 14 parcel 23.17, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreemman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This applicant is requesting approval of a final plat for Phase 1 of Web Estates, and this property is located at Hollendale Road and Morningside Drive. And this phase is at the northwest corner of the intersection of the two roads, and the part that lies close to Hollendale is... It has not many trees. It's not as heavily forested as the back. It is zoned R1, and you can see all the orange area, very wide area is zoned R1 as well. And this is a look at the layout of the lots. So this phase has six lots, and then the next item on the agenda is five, so a total of 11 with Web Estates. And all of these must be 15,000 square feet to meet R1 zoning, and all of them do meet that. The smallest lot is 17,698 square feet. And there are no technical items, and staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments in regards to item number four?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Church?
This is the lot that we discussed at the workshop with the CCOs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Womble?
Mr. Womble, if you'd approach the bench, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Danny Womble, 40 Milton Street, Nashville, Tennessee. Yes, sir.
On the... With the CCOs, I seen there's some of those, the application's been applied for through TDEC, and there's some on the property that have not.
Well, I'm not aware of any on this property where TDEC applications have been applied for. We will apply for permits on Phase 2 where we have open CCOs. If you remember, our discussion on this one was, and it may have been before you were on the planning commission, but the history of this property, as was remembered by many of the board members that had been on the board for several years, was that when Mike Webb bought this piece of property, there was an old CCO right at the corner where that lot number four is, and he treated it and filled it in, and when MN bought the property, it was completely filled and levelled. But based on that history and remembering there used to be a CCO there, we were asked to designate this as a critical lot and investigate whether the CCO was properly sealed and filled before a house is built on it. And that's what this critical lot note is for. And since it had already been filled and sealed before MN bought it, then we did not apply for a Class V injection well, and when it was filled, I don't know if one was issued or not.
So is that... And just help me understand, is that standard?
It's standard to, if you're going to open one up and put drainage in it, or if you're going to close an opening in the ground, to get a Class V injection well. I don't know what this looked like when it was done, so I don't know if it was a standard treatment or non-standard, and I don't know if it would have required a Class V injection well or not. If there was no throat or opening in it, then I would think it would not have.
So it's just unknown. We go on the, I guess, the previous property owner, just his knowledge?
No, sir. That's why the commission asked me to note it as a critical lot and have a geotechnical engineer investigate it and make sure it's safe to build on this lot before a house is permitted on it. And that's the standard engineering approach to this situation.
And that's been agreed to?
That's agreed to. Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Womble. Any other questions or comments?
I appreciate, Mr. Womble, putting the notes on to the... 3, 4, and 5. So when those people do purchase those lots at their deed time, they'll actually have a big star and a note that they'll know exactly what's going on, so they'll be able to come back on the city. Without, make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no by Mr. Church. Motion passes. Final plat Web Estates Phase 2 requested by Womble and Associates, property located on Morningside Drive, tax map 14 parcel 23.16, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreemman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is across the street. These are the other five lots. They're numbered 7 through 11, and they're also zoned R1. And the total acreage for these five lots is 3.44. And some photos. So the property's here, and it is lots of trees. Looks like it's not been cleared before. And then zooming out, and then there's, again, all the R1 zoning in the area. And this is a look from the road at some of the woods. There's no technical items outstanding, and staff will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Again, I have just the questions on the CCOs.
Mr. Womble, if you'd be so kind?
Yes, sir.
The... I guess the goal would be to have these beautiful homes built. I just want to reassure, some sort of reassurance, that the CCOs aren't going to be a problem after someone makes a half a million dollar investment.
Yes, and the two lots that are closest to the CCOs that we found on the property when we did the survey are lot number 7, and you can see a little circle with an arrow going to it from the label that says Class V Injection Well. That little circle's on the very front of the lot. It's not even within the building envelope, but we've noted that to have to be investigated and permitted by the state as a Class V Injection Well, and then to be treated according to that permit. And then the lot is noted that the foundation has to be inspected by a geotechnical engineer during construction before the house can be built. Same thing is true for lot number 11. If you notice on lot number 11, the front setback is a good bit further back from the road. That was done on purpose by design to prevent a house from being able to be built in the location where the injection well will be installed.
And that was what we went over at the workshop?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? No questions? All entertain a motion.
Law has been addressed, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no, Mr. Church? Motion passes. Next item. Concept plan Mason Road Business Park Lot 6, 7, and 8 requested by Kimley Horn, property located on Mason Road, tax map 17 parcel 11, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Mason Road Holdings East LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is a concept plan for the next phase of the Mason Road Business Park that began about 18 months ago, give or take. The entire development is 110 acres, and this concept plan is for lots 6, 7, and 8. You can see the first three buildings that were brought before the city in late 2017, and then the fourth building that was built on the other side of Mason Road that was brought later on in early 18. And so this is the new alignment of Mason Road, and some of the photos will show what it's looking like out there with the new road being built. These... Lots 6, 7, and 8 are these three buildings here, and the building numbers are slightly different. In other words, it's not building 6, 7, and 8, but it's lot 6, 7, and 8. But on your site plan, the building numbers differ a little bit. And by the way, this is lot 5, which is their detention area, large detention area. And together, these three buildings total a little over 510,000 square feet, so half a million square feet of distribution and logistic space. A little bit closer look at the buildings and the layout. I think that covers... I'll go over these pictures. So this is the end of where the barricade is on Mason, and you can see this is the new building that's coming up to the north, and there's another view of that building and then the building behind it to the north. And then this is looking the other direction, which would be toward lots 6, 7, and 8. You can't see them, but they're in this general direction. And I think there were no outstanding technical comments from the workshop, so staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for the applicant for the board?
I'd like the applicant to stand up, and we would be pleased to ask some questions.
Name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. Brendan Bowles, Kimley Horn and Associates, 214 Oceanside Drive in Nashville.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coats?
So at the workshop, we were reviewing your revision original dated 11/24/18. We're now looking at revision 12/17/18. Could you explain the change you made, because you don't identify them in the revision marks of what you did? Let it remind you that we discussed, although it's a concept plan, that you had softened some curves on the interior road for trucks, and I don't see that. That's my concern.
We did... Let me get to the... So at the intersection between kind of the east side of building 4 and 5 and 7, we did increase that radius and added some additional asphalt there. The radius, as you look on C210, is now 110 feet. Labeled there's a radius dimension on the curve just above the truck court on lot 6 on C210. And then north of building 5, as you swing into building 6, heading to the truck court for building 6, that radius was increased to 60 feet.
Mr. Coats, just to give context to his numbers, the city minimum requirement on turning radius is 25 feet. For truck turning movements, we prefer 35. 35 feet is considered adequate by ASHTO, which is basically the gold standard for transportation engineering to be adequate for a wheel-based 62 truck, which would be a semi-truck. So really, once you get past 40, you kind of get into diminishing returns. At 60, you can take the turn at a fairly good rate of speed. Additionally, Curtis can weigh in, but I believe the fire code says basically the same thing.
Yeah, the fire code for aerial apparatus device is 26 foot, which a lot of it's left to the discretion of the HJ. Ours' max turning radius for our tower truck is 28 foot, so that's what we always ask for, is a 28-foot turning radius, which obviously this well exceeds.
Commissioner Coats, I remember the conversation that we had at the workshop. I do not remember a specific curve or drive that there was a concern. We did increase the radius on the two that we thought were most concerning. Right. And I apologize if it wasn't clearly noted on the plans.
Yeah, just normally on the revision notes, that's where you place them, that's what I was looking for, and I just didn't see them. But I appreciate you made the adjustments. I think it's worked all around. It's just from a planning standpoint, it's just my comment is to have the lot numbers, the building numbers different is very confusing.
I know, and if I had to do it over again, I would have instructed our staff to make the numbers the same. Unfortunately, they got going and got to this point, and I didn't want to change it again to make it even more confusing when I came back before you the second time. So it got thrown off with the pond being lot 5, and then we had a building 5, so it was never really going to match up perfectly.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. The completion of Mason Road?
Yes, sir. So when we spoke at the workshop, I know it was an item that everyone's... On everyone's mind, and the anticipated completion date is still the end of January, which is what we had mentioned at the workshop. I know previously it was December, is what everybody was shooting for, weather has slowed us down. We certainly understand the buildings can't be occupied or open before the roads open, and so that's just kind of still where we are, working on it every day that we can when the weather's good.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
So we still... We feel good about the end of January?
Yes, sir. That's the update that I've received from the developer.
And the water... The water tower there for the sprinkler system?
Yes.
What was the total quantity of that?
It was... We mentioned it at the workshop, and I don't have that written down in my notes. I can go back and get that to you guys, but it was designed by the fire sprinkler design...
It's like 300-something thousand gallons?
Yeah, it's 300 or 500,000 gallons, and it's a pretty good size. So it's designed to handle the fire flow for all the buildings in the Mason Road Business Park, so buildings 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and 7. So seven total buildings designed to handle the fire flow. So it's got its own storage reservoir in the tank, and then a fire pump that provides the adequate flow and pressure for the sprinkler system.
So when filling that up, of course, it's on the meter side of things?
Yes.
And with the engineering, with our water treatment facility, if they were to fill that up over a certain amount of time, does that affect the service anyway?
There might be a momentary drop in pressure if, you know, literally everyone turned on their taps at exactly the same time. Pretty low likelihood of that, and the drop in pressure wouldn't be significant enough for anyone to have a longstanding complaint. So with the supply lines that we have there, it's tapped off of the 24, which is neck down to a 12, and it comes into a 10, I believe, going into this tank. So there's a significant amount of water. It won't take them a whole lot of time to fill that tank.
Right. So we don't have to worry about blowing lines off of Mason? You guys upgraded that stuff?
We did install a new public 12-inch line on Mason Road, and we're bringing a 10-inch line, public water line, that'll go down kind of this spine road south of building 4, and it'll work its way all the way back to building 6 to provide domestic water service at 6, and will be a hydrant back there that you'll be able to access on the public line if you ever need to flush the system back there.
And future development in the area, they can tie into that system, or is that for the industrial part?
The current setup is for a determinated building 6. We did meet with the Water and Sewer Department, Mr. Dietz, and showed him that review or that design. It's not stubbed out to the north at this time. The residential development to the east, you know, will be feeding itself over there.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments for applicant? That will entertain a motion.
And then we adjust to put our requirements, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item. Preliminary plat Mason Road Business Park, amendment of lot 6 requested by Kimley Horn, property located on Mason Road, tax map 017 parcel 11, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Mason Road Holdings East LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this preliminary plat will create the lots for the previous item, and that'll occur by subdividing lot 6, current lot 6, into three new lots, and the total acreage is 41.84 acres. And the smallest proposed lot of the three is 9.47 acres, and the largest is just over 20 acres. On the plat, all minimum building setback lines are indicated, and there is a note provided that states the property does not lie in a special FEMA flood zone. It is zoned I-2 as well as the rest of the site, and there were no technical comments outstanding, and staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board in regards to this item? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. I'm going to skip down to number 10, if that's okay with everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Item number 10, set bond amount for Sand Hill Village, property located on Sand Hill Road, tax map 14 parcel 40, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreemman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is to set the bond amount for the final plat at Sand Hill Village, and this development constitutes 33 lots. In total, per the zoning regulations, excuse me, per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three construction bids, an average, plus the required 20% contingency, and a stamped estimate provided by the engineer. Bids are from Four Star Paving, Gaines Construction, and JB Rollins. Engineer's estimate comes to $85,800 in total, and staff will be happy to answer. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board in regards to this amount?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate to Mr. Womble getting signature on all three. We have been requiring that, and it's nice to see that, that we've got a real signature of it is, and without, make a motion to accept the bond amount of $85,800.
We have a motion to accept the stated bond amount. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Back to item number eight. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend 3.100 accessory use regulations, increase maximum allowable size of accessory structure presented by Mayor Cole. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is the amendment to the zoning regulations that would allow an increase in the size of certain accessory structures. Currently, the city allows a maximum size to be 1,500 square feet for an accessory structure. This amendment would allow an increase to 2,500 square feet for an accessory structure if the applicant had two acres of property or more. If they don't have two acres of property, they could not have that size of accessory structure. The language is mostly unchanged from the December workshop. There were... City attorney helped us and did make a few minor changes, but nothing... All the mathematics is still the same. So staff will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments in regards to this? Do we have any questions or comments in regards to this item?
I have a question for Randolph. Randolph, there's, would this involve the property there off of Waldron Road, the farm? There's a gentleman contacted us, or contacted me for a pole barn.
Bobby Sands.
Would this be something that would, would that relate to this situation?
Yes, sir, it would.
And that would eliminate those incidents that we're in with, with, I guess, telling someone that has ten acres they can't build a pole barn on their property?
Well, no, I mean, as our ordinance currently allows, they're allowed fifty percent of the primaries, fifty percent in accessory square footage of the primary not to exceed fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Fifteen hundred aggregate feet. In other words, they can have ten buildings as long as they all don't exceed fifty percent of the primary structure or exceed fifteen.
So even though it's, in his situation, it's an agriculture piece of land with cows on it?
Well, it's, it's not zoned ag, I think it's zoned residential or...
That's a different property, I believe you're talking about. You're talking about the Gooch Farm, and they have no animals on the Sands property.
Okay, so the Gooch Farm, maybe the Gooch Farm is the one we're talking about. So would they be allowed to build a pole barn there?
I'm not sure what Gooch property we're referring to.
Right next to Rock Springs Elementary, large farm with the fountain in the front, and they usually have horses.
Sure.
That area.
Sure. If I may interject, according to the zoning, agricultural would not be affected by this, correct?
I don't think so, no.
Yes, and agricultural has a little bit more leeway in regards to barns and such, so.
This is purely residential.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman? The ordinance is submitted.
I have a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman in regards to this item. And next item. I believe it's, number nine is deferred, correct, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir. The Sands.
Yes, sir. And we will move on to bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Leach.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, excuse me. The only significant changes from the last time you saw it, and of course, for some of you, this will be the first time you've seen it, would be that Mr. Dennis Butler has extended his letter of credit for one additional year. And Hampton Roads Phase Three, which was given a favorable recommendation and accepted by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, has submitted their maintenance bond. So they have moved from a development bond to a maintenance bond, and those are really the only changes of significance.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the board? I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you for your attendance, and thank you for everything. Meeting adjourned.